Mr. Cass, would you care to join me at the podium? I will ask that you read the oath, state your name, and you can do it together. I start. I, Laura Lafferty.
On Cass.
Do swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith in allegiance to the same government established in the United States and the state under the authority of the Board of Education. So help me God. I'll be back to my seat soon.
I state your name.
When do I get my raise?
Yeah. As soon as the rest of us stand down.
Don't hold my breath, right?
I, Board Secretary, call this meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education at 7:32 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the daily record and/or the start ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and at each of the school buildings in the district. And we read the Pledge of Allegiance. Now our roll call. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mrs. Deluna?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Here.
Mr. Luer?
Present.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Capello?
Here.
For the record, I will read the results of the annual school election held November 8th, 2016. Mr. Cass, 4,431 appalls, 579 absentees, a total of 5,010 votes. Mrs. Wagner, 118 appalls, four absentees, 122 votes total. The next order of business, I will open for nomination for school board president.
I will nominate.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Don.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Dino Capello for the position of president.
Do I have any other nominations? Having no more, no other nominations, I'll roll call. Once I roll call your names, please say the name or just say. Mr. Capello, would you like to make a comment before?
Absolutely.
Are you good with this, Dino?
I am absolutely, yes, I'm good with this. I thank you guys for the confidence. Hopefully, I didn't mess up too much last year, that you have the confidence that I can do. I will certainly try to do better this year. No, thank you very much, I appreciate the, appreciate the confidence, and I really enjoyed being president last year, and thank you.
Would anybody else would like to make a comment? Our roll call. Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Capello, yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Vote for Dino.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Always feels strange, but yes, I'll vote for myself. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Capello will assume the leadership of the meeting going forward.
Thank you. At this time, we will take nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Anderson for the position of vice president.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. There are no other nominations. Mr. Anderson, would you care to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Cass, and I kind of echo a lot of Dino's comments. It was, I felt like we had a really good year last year. We've got a lot of exciting things on the books, particularly the strategic planning for this year, so I'm, I would be happy to, to be vice president if you guys would feel that way.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Vote for Dino, or, sorry, I voted right?
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best part of it.
Sorry.
Yes. Okay, moving on to president's comments. Again, thank you all very much for the confidence you've shown, you know, both Mike and I. I think we did have a good year last year, I'm looking forward to an even better year this coming year. It's an exciting year, for sure. We have the strategic plan, which I am very, very interested to see how that goes. I think it's going to be eye-opening for all of us, and I'm really hoping for a lot of community involvement. So hopefully, that will be a great experience for all of us. You know, our board goals, we set them late last year, and I think, you know... Moving on to the committees, as has been prior practice, I am going to hold off assigning committees and representatives for our committee, for, you know, town committees until our next meeting. What I would ask you all to do is to contact me, email me with the list of preferences you might have. One thing that I thought might be useful to do, I think the committees, hopefully, Mrs. Wagner, the committee, probably, I think apparently straight forward to what there are, but maybe we could run down some of the liaisons, just so, I'm not sure how many of these you might want to, just understand what they're about, so we can do that, if that's okay with everybody. So the first two, or the first one is the Morris County School Boards Association, that's the, that's the organization that we subscribe to that supports us, will also be doing our strategic plan. The, the mic's out?
All the mics are out.
I know, this thing is rebooting.
Okay. Was it pushed on?
Pushed on, just speak up, so.
All right. Okay. So the Morris County Association of New Jersey School Boards, that's an organization that meets once a month, and it's a very particular meeting for me, you don't necessarily have to go to the meeting, they're pretty useful. The Morris County Educational Services Commission, maybe, Mrs. Lindsay, you could give a thumbnail sketch on what that is?
Hi, Ken, I'm happy to give a thumbnail sketch. The Morris County Ed Service Commission is a board that's made up of board members from districts, I think, all from this county that utilize the Ed Service Commission, which for a lot of districts, they use it mainly for transportation, shared arrangements. They do, sorry. They use it for that, and it's also, is a county, they run to, I guess they're public out-of-district school placements, so the board votes both on those schools. If you become the liaison to this, and you show up at the first meeting, you will be on the board, and you will then have another board meeting a month, and they vote for those two schools and for all the shared service agreements. And, well, I'm, Dino, you gave a great exclamation, explanation, I'm sorry, about the Morris County School Board Association. I believe I am still serving a term on the county board of directors for that, so if other people don't want to raise their hand, I have to be there anyhow, but as Dino said, all are welcome and they're very educational, so I'm happy to let somebody else be the liaison, and I can be a backup since I should be there anyhow.
The board-to-board is not something that actually really met last year, is that? Is that kind of semi-dormant, or is that?
It's kind of dormant, yeah.
Okay, that is the Morris Hills Regional, basically, it's the, all the sending districts will meet periodically and discuss issues that are kind of germane to us, the sending districts and the high school district, but it's been, it hasn't really happened, or didn't happen in 2016, so we'll have to see how that one goes, I guess. The negotiations committees, I think, again, are sort of self-explanatory, the teachers, the support staff, and our administrators. The only time this might be an issue is if you're conflicted out because of a family member, but we can always discuss that. The delegate assembly is, Mariana, can I?
I'm happy to explain that, too.
Lean on you one more time?
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Delegate Assembly meets twice a year, it's board members from, one board member from every district in the whole state come together in a centrally, equally not convenient for everyone location, and we vote on issues that are put before the delegate assembly. Any board can send in an issue. At the last meeting, we voted on things about, the big one was special education and whether the onus should be on the person bringing the suit to prove their case or on the districts, and right now, it's on the districts. And when the delegate assembly votes, what they do is, it doesn't change law, it changes how our Morris Counties, not Morris County, does New Jersey School Boards Association advocates on our behalf with legislators and the governor.
Great, thank you. Mike, can I ask you a two-second about Denville, again, assuming that's the foundation of Denville?
Yeah. Foundation of Denville is a nonprofit organization that supports the three local schools in Denville, so Valley View, River View, and Lakeview, and they basically fund it through a few fundraisers a year, and they provide grants to both teachers and district-wide grants to support programs that might be out of the ordinary, so to say, or things that are above and beyond what we're able to often provide, and just different ideas, teachers bring some really great grants in, so they meet a few times a year, and they do two different fundraisers throughout the year.
Thank you. Our legislative representative is not really a, doesn't really meet with anybody particularly, as far as I know, but I actually filled in this year. We met with, through New Jersey School Boards setup, through, through Mike.
Can I do a little comment here?
Yes, please, because that may be off.
Well, we have this discussion every year, and I actually pulled the minutes from last year's agenda, and the legislative rep was struck because of the discussions we had last year, so I was surprised to see it on here. You, Dino, do serve as the 23rd district, is that where we are?
Right.
Legislative rep for the state, to the New Jersey School Boards Association, but it's not a liaison that you, as the board president, can appoint, which is why I keep asking to have it struck. You serve as this...
So I was, so I was, oh, because you recommended me, that's why?
Yes, that is right. I served, I served as the legislative rep for this district, the alternate, I believe you're the alternate, although I'm sure there's a shot for you to step up because I believe the...
See, I think this year, they actually made me the primary.
Yes, because she stepped down, the primary stepped down. I mean, she no longer, she didn't run for her seat. So, yeah, so I believe that you could be the primary now. So, but no matter who you assign here, it doesn't get you off the hook of that, so that's why I thought we struck it and did not assign anyone.
Well, then, let's skip that one. Municipal Alliance Committee.
I am, I am ashamed to admit that that was me, and I did not remember to go to any meetings this year, so if you'd like to hand that to me again, I will try to actually attend some of the meetings this year. When I figured out when the meetings were last April, they had stopped having meetings until Sept, until September because they were out of budget.
But Barb maybe could speak to what they do, because she in the past served on it, right, Barb?
Yeah, so there's grants from, through the county for like the, well, formerly known as DARE program and such, so there's, basically, the gist is you have a certain budget that you're, like, those guest speakers that we talked about, you know, those are, a lot of times are either fully or partially funded through that. And they have all the different, there's, it's supposed, yeah, different municipal, over the years, there's been different, like, the different schools are invited to be there, whoever could receive the grant money.
And Barb, you also, you, I know you did Pride this year.
Yeah, so they don't meet every month, maybe four or five times annually, and they do all the events in town that you read about in the paper, so they really have representatives of all the other groups, they try to bring them all to town hall and compare notes like blood drives and what have you, just to see that every, you know, share, knowledge share, and see how other groups can help out, like, the last meeting was all about the parade, and, yeah, they're not going to meet again for, I forget when the next meeting is, yeah. It's not, it's not every month.
Okay, and the Recreation Committee. Don, how big a?
Yeah, I still on the Recreation Committee, and they're all the time, so makes sense.
The Technology Committee, that's the Technology Committee of the, of the district, that's not our board technology committee, right?
That is...
That's the district.
District.
That's the district.
That was going to be my request, that you would add that in there.
Right.
Since the bulk section, you're going to do the Technology Committee. We meet about twice per year, and there are representatives from different schools and different stakeholders in the district that come through, and sometimes, and from the community as well.
And the Security Committee, my plan is to recharge that again this year, for another year. We had two meetings during the course of the last year, which I felt were very useful. We actually did have a meeting December 14th, which we may talk a little bit more about later, so my plan is to recharge that, and again, that's obviously a committee that meets periodically to talk about security issues with our schools, our facilities, personnel, anything that touches on security. We meet with police personnel and really whoever else makes sense.
Would you want that on January, do you want it January 23rd, or you want to do it January 9th?
I don't know if it matters that much, whatever it fits, wherever it fits better, I don't necessarily...
When do you expect to appoint committees, on the 23rd?
Well, I'd like to actually appoint the committees before. I'd like to do, because we have the next, we have the next meet, our next, our regular work session is next week. My plan was to get everybody's input before then, so.
I mean, it's not going to be a rush, because we're probably not going to have our first meetings until February.
Right.
Just because if you're doing here...
Right, that's why if it's, if we're jammed up, if there's a lot going on...
We have strategic planning about the board meeting, too.
So, I mean, I can, I don't care when we charge, when we charge the committee necessarily. And then, of course, we have our PTA liaison, and one that I think, in fact, Mariana mentioned this to me today, we mentioned at our last reorg about a CPAC liaison.
Oh, yeah.
But that did not make the list, so.
We'll fix that.
We can add that, please.
More comment, and I'm pretty sure I said this last year, too. I'm looking at the district calendar right now, January 4th, this Wednesday, is River View's PTA meeting. I think Lakeview falls after the 9th, when you're going to assign these, and I don't see Valley View's on the district calendar, and CPAC next meets on our board meeting date because we didn't have our calendar on the calendar yet. I don't know if you want to assign someone to River View, or it can all just wait until, you know, February.
Mr. Anderson did River View this year, is there anybody who necessarily has a strong feeling about doing the River View PTA again, that being the liaison?
I can probably do it sometimes. My, my wife is, is also on the, is one of the committee chairs there, so she frequently goes when, when we don't, when we have someone to watch the kids, we can both go. Maybe, maybe Mike and I can alternate, if he doesn't want to do the, do it the whole time.
What's your feeling, Adam? Do you like sticking with it, or?
I'm fine sticking with it.
Okay.
And then, if I need backup, obviously.
Sure. So why don't we do that? We'll make Mr. Anderson the primary? And Mr. Luer the alternate? Great, thank you. Valley View PTA is coming up, actually, it's the, it never makes, for some reason, it never makes the district calendar.
It forgets it.
I did that last year, I am more than happy to continue that again, unless somebody feels a burning, a burning desire to take it over. All right, nobody, I will stay with that. They, they serve good food at the, I know, I should have said that.
You mentioned it afterwards.
Exactly, I'm not, I'm not an idiot. All right, we don't know when the Lakeview one is, or?
Oh, we do, Lakeview meets on the 11th, I just, it doesn't meet until after our next meeting.
Right, okay. Well, is there anybody who's, who would like to take the Lakeview one? Why don't we get the PTA ones done now, if we can?
I am willing to continue on with the Lakeview PTA, I still chair a committee there, so I go to meetings anyhow, so I'm happy to do that, and I'm also happy to do that because that normally is the same meeting night as Morris County Ed Services, so if you have assigned to that.
Okay, is that all right with everybody? All right, Mrs. Lindsay, you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, the rest we will put off to our next meeting. Again, just, if you have any questions about any of these, please just email me or call me, and send me your preferences, and we'll sort it out.
You know, just one generic thing on these, when we look at our board goal in kind of being active in the community, these are great opportunities to get out in front of, you know, different people, particularly some things like, I know I did the Pride Council one year, and they were really interested in hearing about what's going on at the schools, they, a lot of the folks that are involved there don't necessarily have kids in the district, or, so aren't necessarily hearing everything, so great opportunities for us to get out to a lot of different people and talk about what's going on in schools, the good things, the challenges, whatever we have going on, so hopefully, we take advantage of some of these. I know that it's a lot on everybody, because it's a lot hours, but if we can't make them, and I'll say this to anybody who, if you can't make a certain meeting somewhere, reach out, and hopefully, somebody else can jump in. I'm happy to do it when I can.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we'll move on to appointments. Would you care, do you want to move these?
Sure.
Mr. Anderson?
Sure.
Can I move our appointments?
If there are no objections, I'd like to move items one through...
Where, I think there's 17, is it 17? 17.
Yep. 17, and, okay, that does include, I just want to make sure it includes the number 17. If there are no objections, I'd like to move items one through 17 as a block.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Luer.
Right.
Second. This includes, obviously, all of our routine appointments for auditor, insurance, attorney, special education attorneys, our insurance agent, financial advisors, accounting systems, banking, E-Rate consultants, it also includes us adopting our existing bylaws and policies, curriculum, procedures, things like that, as well as the personnel appointments that we do on an annual basis. That are included here, our newspaper, our official newspaper for notice, includes tech shelter annuity, more financial appointments, and companies that we assign, health benefits, domestic partner, bid threshold, that's a big one, as well as the final one that I did want to note, which is number 17?
We're recording, do you want to tell them the lines from 14 to the record? Where Dino Capello is...
Yes, thank you. Number 14, item number 14 will fill in, Mr. Dino Capello has been elected as president of the Board of Education. Congratulations. And then, yeah, and then number 17, I did want to note that it is a attachment, and that, I'm going to just read this resolution, because I think it's worthwhile pointing out, or at least parts of it. The Business Administrator has recommended that it be beneficial for the Board of Education and its employees to offer this incentive to all of its employees for the calendar year 2017, and whereas the Board of Education is in agreement with such recommendation, and whereas the decision of the Board of Education to allow its employees to waive coverage and the amount of the consideration to be paid therefore shall not be subject to the collective bargaining process in accordance with NJSA 52:14-17.31 AC, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Denville, Morris County, State of New Jersey, that it will offer an incentive for eligible employees who waive medical insurance in the amount of 25% or $5,000, whichever is less, of the amount saved by the employee because of the employer, employee's waiver of coverage. So it basically says that we are going to continue to offer to our employees the waiver, if they decide to waive medical insurance, a, a financial benefit for that, either 25% or $5,000, whichever is less, which is what we have done in the past and will continue to do.
Very good. Okay, so at this point, at this point in the process, if, if anyone has any questions, comments about any of these items, this is the time where we'll, we'll discuss them, and if there's anything that you'd like to say or clarify, please go ahead and speak up. No, I'm just saying, in general, this is our discussion period for these items, so. Demaris, could you, if, it doesn't, could you give us a little background on increasing the bid quotation threshold and what it means to be a qualified, a certified as a qualifying purchasing agency?
A qualifying purchasing agency, firstly, you have to go through a certification. You have to go through a certification in order to become a qualifying purchasing agency, which give you, the business administrator, the authority to purchase any item up to $6,000 without any quotes. Anything above $6,000, you must obtain at least two quotes minimum in order to support that purchase. Additionally, if we need to go into a contract with any vendors for over $40,000, we do not need to go to bid, below, I'm sorry, below $40,000. Anything above $40,000, you need to go out of bid. If you do not have a qualifying agency certificate, it would be $29,000, up to $29,000 before you can go out to bid, or $4,350 before you can obtain two quotes. It's just give you the flexibility to increase your purchases up to a certain amount.
Is this something that's fairly common, or is this, I mean, how unique is this, that you have this certification?
It's fairly common in business administrator. You just need to have at least two years' minimum experience in purchasing, and apply for the certificate, and have the superintendent sign off on the certificate, on the form, on the application, and demonstrate that you have the experience.
And we did this resolution last year, too.
Yes.
I guess that would be mine, is there anything, they go, this is similar to last year, is there anything new that we should be aware?
One thing we decided to do differently was not to appoint an architect today. We, we have gone out to bid and received some, some proposals, and we felt like we would, it would be better for us... it would be better for us to put that off, bring it through the committee and, and explain the, what do we have, about five different proposals?
We had six different RFPs who responded.
So we figured we would bring that through, through the committee and have the committee make a recommendation to the board, obviously with my support and the Business Administrator's support as to who we would like to have as our architect of record for next year. This year, actually.
Steve, I know that the committee will look at that, but out of curiosity, how does, what does an architect come back with for a bid? Because obviously they're not bidding on a project, it's kind of generic.
Right, it's more about what they can do for you and their experiences. Like, you know, we want to see, we want to see, are they a full service? Like, for example, our current architect is not full service, does not have an engineering department, so every time we need engineering, they have to ship it out. So that's one of the things we looked at. How long have they been involved in public school, you know, architecture? It varies. Their location is another thing. Like, we have, one of them, one of them's all the way from Red Bank. Now, that, maybe that's not something we're looking for. We have one that's almost in Danville, like literally on the border of Danville by Kim Swims, so that, that could be a positive thing, too. So it's basically a bunch of things like that. Demaris put together a spreadsheet and it had, has about six different fields in it, so it's pretty easy to read. We'll give that spreadsheet out to them, we'll give it to the full board after, after we discuss, and we'll make our recommendation and put it on a resolution in February.
Okay.
I think discuss it with them.
Because we don't, they can't really speak anything to price, right? I mean, do we just know?
There's a little bit of price, right?
They do have the price, an hourly.
Just their hourly rate?
Hourly rate, depending on, on the certificate.
The guy that's half the price takes double as long, though.
Right. But there's certain, there's certain criteria, like Steve mentioned, if they are full service architect, engineering house, it might be more attractive than outsourcing those services.
Do any, do any of them have any kind of environmental experience or is that really just a completely separate thing? When you talk about like environment, you know, we've, we've obviously run into a lot of environmental issues in the last couple of years.
Well, the person that we used is the engineer that I wanted our architect to use.
Okay.
So they use French and Perillo, which is a company I've had a history with. They're a pretty big engineering firm and one of their big parts of their, of their, of their business is environmental.
Environmental.
So they've done a lot of environmental remediation. They oversaw the entire project for us.
Okay.
Here.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions at all?
So, but we have outstanding voices with the current, it's not like there's any lasting service or anything.
We're still working with our current architect and we do have, they're still working with us with the town hall construction and other projects in the district as well. So we still have outstanding voices.
So along those lines, if we were to change architects, would they finish that project with us?
We would, if we decided to change architects, we would most likely phase them out and start phasing in the new ones. It may even be, it may, it may not, there may even be projects, you know, substantial amount of our projects that are going to happen even this summer that we've already started with the other architects. So it'll just be a phasing out process, if that's the way we decide to go.
So, but I think Mrs. Deluna brings up a really good point because we don't, if we needed an architect right now, we don't have an architect on record for 2017, right?
We did appoint them until for the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, back in May, I think it was, when we appointed everybody.
Okay, so they're different than these. Because all of these say 2017, our attorney, our auditor, everything, so that's different. Okay, perfect, thank you.
You don't have to have one.
But then if you don't, you'd have to go out to bid for every project, right?
Not necessarily, not because they're professional services, we do not have to go out to bid.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you an example. We, when, when I got here, there was a problem, the board members that were here, there was always a problem at Valley View drop off. Everybody complained about it, the traffic backed up, and we all decided to hire French and Perillo without our architect at all to go do a traffic study and design study and those things have been put in place and it's improved it. So there's an example of we didn't, we didn't have, this is not our architect director, it's a different person outside and we weren't able to use them.
Okay. All right. We're good. I'll poll her all, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the public meeting calendar. If there are no objections, I would like to move to adopt the following resolution, adopting the board calendar for 2017.
I'll start.
Thank you. Mr. Cass? Go ahead.
Just to be clear, the vote on this is also the vote that we spoke about at the last board meeting to decide whether or not we move to town hall?
The location is on the document.
Right, that's what I'm, just to make sure everybody caught that.
And we also like to make one change or a suggestion for a change. Due to the, the Foundation of Denville's annual golf outing is also September 25th, we'd like to make a recommendation to have one Board of Education meeting in September on September 18th.
Don't we normally like to have the two meetings, excuse me, in September because of we got, we always have new hires that we need to get them approved as soon as possible?
If you look at the date of September 11th, the school year would have already started. The majority of my people that we would be hiring at that time would be people I could hire under the new hiring policy we have, meaning I can hire them temporarily until the board approves it. Most likely, and obviously this could happen, but most likely there would not be people who would be quitting another job. And if they were quitting another job, they'd have to give 60 days notice anyway. So it really, at one time, I would never want to do this, but at this point, with the new policy we have where we can hire, hire temporarily, it really is okay to do it now.
Okay, so we would be eliminating the meetings on the 11th to the 25th and just having the one on the 18th.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you need to verify town hall? Or are we...
We will have to do that.
We would have to.
We can always change it.
And we can also move it to the community room and town hall if we have to.
So, for the record, for Mrs. Wagner, who wasn't here when we had the whole discussion at the last board meeting about moving the location, I will vote against this motion because I believe strongly that when we have community, which I know we don't have any tonight, but when you have students in to be honored and awarded and their families are here, that they should be in the schools, that anytime we invite the community in, they should be here in the schools so they understand where all the tax money that we take for them, from them goes.
We also like to point out that on this current version of the, of the calendar for next year, the reorganization and first work session meeting would be on the same date, Thursday, January 4th. That is not what you've normally done here, but it was something that we felt may be beneficial to us and it was a date that we could get at the town hall and it also didn't conflict with other things in the district.
Just coming back to Mrs. Lindsay's point, and we, again, mostly for Mrs. Wagner's benefit because she wasn't here, but we had a fairly long discussion about this and I don't think anybody necessarily felt that we have a perfect solution with town hall. We don't have a perfect solution for meeting places in the schools right now. They all have challenges. I personally was, am willing to give it a try, at least for, say, the first quarter of this year to see how it goes, but it, I have the same concern she does. I am a little leery about moving them from the place where we actually conduct, you know, the business that we are all here for. So, you know, I will, I will vote for this, but, you know, I definitely have reservations to see how this, how it will work out at town hall.
And we can change this. If we go to town hall and we don't like it, we can move back. You know, we did it before. We've changed our location in the middle of the year. So, it's not set in stone, but you know my feelings on it. It was, it's less intrusive on our, on our programs and the setup will be easier for our staff and it's more centrally located for the town and our, and our Board of Education offices will be taking, taking place, our Board of Education office will be moving there sometime between July and September of 2017.
I know you guys had this discussion last meeting, but was there any discussion about the concern of having the meetings here and opening the building to the public for security reasons?
No, I never, I mean, it wasn't really about security, it was more about the operational kind of having somebody here, you know, to keep the building open or, you know, to break down. This basically, this setup we have here takes like an afternoon, take, kind of takes this building out, I mean, this room out of commission.
The reason, but the reason is because they have to put the tables up.
Right.
It takes two people. So they have to do it before the second person leaves and they bring all this stuff down and set it up. So it does basically sit like this from, say, 2:00 on.
Right, so it kind of takes this room out of commission. We also have, at River View, we had basketball in the background, which was an issue, or we had to kick them out, which is something, obviously, we didn't necessarily want to do. So, and the other spaces are generally too small for a meeting where you may have, where you're going to have the public in. So, you know, it was never really a great solution. Town Hall has the ability of being able to just walk right in, turn, flip a couple of switches and we start our meeting, but again, it's not in our schools. That's, you know, that's a trade-off.
Don't we still have to have someone from our, for, for one of our people get set up the, to set up the recording equipment?
Yes.
So we're still going to have somebody having to stay later and, and do stuff anyway, right?
Record, correct.
Okay.
Rather the all or nothing scenario, could we do the work sessions here and the regulars there to make it more formal?
We talked about that and I think the concern was us as well as the public not knowing where our meetings are going to be. So the confusion over, it's a work session, it's a regular session, where are we going? I think we've, in the past, Mariana, you could probably speak to this, right? In the past, you guys had them at multiple locations and actually board members didn't show up to the meeting, so they thought they were at a different spot.
Yes.
I, I think...
I, I fielded many a phone call in the hour before board meetings in that year and even then, it was the ones who didn't reach out the call that didn't show up in the right spot, so.
I, 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 in general, liked the idea. We even talked about like trying to move it around to different schools, so there's different views. I, I think it becomes, it feels confusing to both us and the public on where you guys at tonight. So, conceptually, I like it, I just don't know practically if it would work.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, and we talked about this a lot last meeting and despite my feelings similar to Mariana that I like being in the schools, I just don't think we have the ideal situation. I don't think this room is ideal. We don't, we talked about almost every location we can think of and like Dino said, town hall is literally flip a switch, walk in, when you're done, flip the switch off and you're done. Seats are there, the, you know, everything's set up so that we walk in and out. So, I, I feel the same way as Dino, like I'm willing to give it a try. If, if we see a downside to it, then, you know, we could always make a change, but right now, I, I think, despite it not being ideal, probably is, is a good suggestion, a good try for, for now.
And I'll just say, and one last thing that we talked about the last meeting, is that unless you have a presentation or a, you know, by the teachers and the kids, or we're doing some awards, zero to maybe three people show up to these meetings and when there are a few people, it could be the media, correct, the press is here, so very little attendance at the meetings. There's pluses and minuses, as we talked about, to each location, but the town hall is a more centralized location, everybody knows where it is. So, I think you started off there. Steve said it's not set in stone. You can always make a change, but I just don't think you're going to get a lot of complaints by the public that the meetings are not at the school anymore.
I don't think wherever we are, we're going to get complaints from the public about where we hold our meetings. That's not really the issue. And for me, the person, not me, the board member looking out for the facilities, me the person, I'll take town hall, it's a much quicker drive. And I agree that it's more centrally located, which is why we were at River View School for my first, you know, eight years on the board. It's just, and no, in the day-to-day, we don't have anyone here at our normal meetings and as we discussed at the last meeting, we could fit in the library media center and not tie up this room because we could fit this many audience members in the library. And I mean, other boards meet in their, you know, board office at the conference table with like 10 seats for the public. I mean, that's how other boards do it. So, it's not like you need to have a big space for them. You know, I don't, I did not mean to drag it out, it's just, since Mrs. Wagner wasn't here for the meeting, I felt that we should speak to it.
Oh, this is a good discussion. Any other, any other thoughts?
No, thank you for the review.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna? Mrs. Lindsay?
No.
Mr. Luer?
No.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. All right, thank you, everybody.
We're good.
Okay. We would normally open for public discussion at this point. Since there's no one here, I guess we will move to the calls. And we normally at this point have a handout, which you should have, about our code of ethics, acknowledgement of the receipt of the code of ethics. As I remember it, we typically read this, I believe, into the record. If anybody would volunteer, I'll, I'll do it. Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Please sign this acknowledgement, oops, sorry, wrong one. No, it's okay, I was looking at the wrong side. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties and I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So if all of you would fill out back, and I believe, Demaris, you collect these when we're done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, while, while you're doing, do we have any, does anyone have any other other?
Yeah, I've got a, two quick things. Foundation of Denville is doing a spring fundraiser. It'll be a, a band night, it's on March 25th at Peace Pipe Country Club in Denville. They've got two local bands, Quarter Pound Jones and Guy Smiley, both have Denville residents in them, that'll be playing that night. They're in the process of getting flyers and some, some information out, but it is locked in for that date, so if anybody can make it, feel free, it's always a, a good event.
When's the date begin?
March 25th.
Are they going to get it on the calendar?
Um, yes. I'm sure we get it in there. And then, second thing, a couple weeks ago, Dino mentioned, the Security Committee met. Just as a, as a quick kind of report from there on a few basic things that were discussed, we discussed some budget items for... we discussed some budget items for next year's budget, is already looking out forward for that. We talked about the bus cameras and the procedure for getting those videos for offenders over to the police, that seems to be going well. The, one thing that the chief of police did mention is that they, this continues to be a problem, so it's, it's not, they have not seen a dramatic reduction in the amount of people that are passing school buses because of it, but they're, they're continuing to publicize that it's out there and look at other options. We talked about a couple different options, too. And the, and the other big thing we discussed was just forward-looking towards the potential for school, school resource officer and agreement with the police department on how that would work. We're nowhere near coming to a resolution, or at least a finalized, finalized idea of that, but at least initial discussions on, on what that would look like. If you guys remember, that bill was just passed. However, Chief Wagner did inform us that there's a lot of, a lot more things that have to be done, the training, and that stuff's not set up yet, so we're, we're not ready to, to present that to the board as something that, that we think we should move with, but something we're starting to have a discussion on potentially in the future what that would look like. Is there anything else, Steve or Dino, you guys want to mention?
Well, you used the word school resource officer. There's a, just to make sure everybody understands, there's a little bit of a difference between a school resource officer and this particular job, this is not the same job as a school resource officer. It would provide security, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't do the other things, the educational component. When the chief got this law passed, he was adamant that those two jobs were, were totally separate. And I know that this board, prior to some of you being on it and before me, was strongly looking at some school resource, a school resource officer, resource officer at one point. So this is much different job, much less expensive. When a school resource officer is in the $150,000 range, this particular job would be more in, for a full-time person, somewhere in the $40,000 range. So, it could be any, any different set-up, somewhere in around a $40,000, it could be a part-time person for $25,000 or $30,000, whatever. But it's not, it's not the same as a resource officer, it's not, it's a retired officer without benefits, and it's a part-time job.
Steve, for those of us who didn't live through all the different discussions, I was here when we were discussing getting, I know that the chief used to, before this law, didn't want, you know, retired people because they weren't under the jurisdiction of the police. This law lets a person be, but can you sort of go back to square one basics? A school resource officer that you guys are looking at, is it similar to like what Morris County VOTAC has, that I'm familiar with? So, why don't you give us a little broad brush of what it is, because what do they do in the high school right now is under different, and what they do in the county high school is different, so what are you looking at?
Okay, so, the differences in the town, in the way they work with Morris Hills Regional and the way they work with VOTAC is really only...
About how they pay.
Finance, right.
Right, that's a payment.
Exactly. So, we would do neither. One is a, some, more, and don't quote me exactly, but I give you an estimate of approximately 70% from the town, 70% from the, from the board of ed, 30% from the town, something along those lines.
I actually think it's more important to explain what they do over how it would be paid for.
Okay, so, the difference between a school resource officer and this thing, which is called a class three?
Right.
Well, the similarity to start is they would work for the town police department, they would not work for us.
Right, they'd be under...
They would be, they would work with us, and we, we're obviously gonna have to finance them, so it's not like he just worked for the police, but they would, they were a regular police officer with police powers in the school and up to like a hundred feet, I think he said, right? Then he'd say a hundred feet outside the school. So it's not like he could pull them out, like, you know, there's a, a big mess downtown, we need you down there, they can't do that. So it's, the person would only have police powers, right. The, this particular person would really be only responsible for the security of the buildings, security and safety, things like that, along those, along that line. Wouldn't necessarily be a security guard, because there would need like six of them, you know, to cover our schools, but it would be a person that would be responsible for security, do all the trainings, you know, go through all the different things that, that right now, the chief is, has been graciously doing for us, but he would be able to assign somebody realistically to us, and it wouldn't have to be a $150,000 guy, that's the beauty of it.
Well, yeah, the whole class three is a wonderful thing.
Right. When you talk about the cost of a, of a real resource officer, and I'm saying $150,000 because you have to add in the benefits and all the other things that go along with an officer. This, this officer would be getting paid a daily salary, we were thinking $200 a day, and they would, the, the board would be responsible for the salary, and the town would be responsible for all the residual costs, and there would be several, like the weapon, the training, the vehicle, the uniform, anything along those lines. In our preliminary plans, and we go on record, preliminary plans was, you guys were there, you can chime in if I'm missing something, was that the town would be responsible for all the other things, and we would be responsible for the salary.
The direct, the direct salary.
The direct salary.
Yeah, he was, Chief Wagner was very specific that this person would report to the police department in the morning, you know, get a vehicle there, drive to the school. The only time that, that that person, I think he said, could actually do something outside of the school was...
On the way.
On the way. If he literally saw something going on, he could divert and do that, but like Steve said, it's not like, they wouldn't be using him for saying, oh, well, there's something down the street from Valley View, so send the guy down there to go take care of it. So, it's, it's a, it's a partnership, I mean, the person's literally gonna be wearing a Denville police uniform and driving a police vehicle and all that.
Now, here's the thing where I'm not exactly sure. Can I speak publicly on the record? Is it an executive thing when you talk about what they actually do for security?
I think we probably want to not go into...
I think we should do that later, like, let's...
So, let's do that later, because I, I know that there are some board members that don't understand. I used to serve on the Security Committee, I was one of the board members that pushed for this. I understand, but I would like to make sure that we're all on the same page with what they can do for the district.
There were some initial discussions at the Security Meeting about general duties, tasks, responsibilities.
Okay, so maybe you can share that with us.
But we can, in executive...
I would like, I mean, I would...
And it was very early discussions, by the way, this was very much...
I understand, but just so a board member sitting at the table has a general idea of what's going on.
I think that's something we, we can do as an executive.
Thank you very much, I would appreciate it.
Since, since we're gonna be paying the bill, we should have a job description, so we'll discuss that, and that'll be a publicly approved document.
To answer the rest of your questions, a typical resource officer would also be in charge of like drug and alcohol offenses and education within the school, so that could be everything from educating in a class to actual monitoring testing of a student that was suspected of drug and alcohol offenses. You typically see that in high school, not very often in Morris County Middle School, if, you know, not full-time, not full-time, I don't think.
But now, Ocean County just took that on, I don't think.
Okay. Are we still in the other?
Yes, we are.
I, I just saw in Mr. Forte's hands the cards about the app, and I just wanted to let you know that at the meetings I've attended as the board liaison, which were a couple since our last meeting, they are actively handing them out, trying to get as many community members to have that in their hands, or at least scan the QR code, and so, I, hopefully it's, you're getting more people signing up for the app, because I know every meeting I've been at, they've been handing out the cards.
Last I checked, we had 3:50, so I was pretty happy, that was, that was about three weeks ago. I think we have a goal, my goal was, our goal as a team was to have 1,000 downloads for one year from the time we, we, we go with this thing. I think we're gonna be able to pick up a lot of back-to-school nights next year, and our kindergarten registrations and things like that.
Especially if you do something like Mr. Anderson suggested, and you put something out there first, like, you know, school closings or whatever, that was all the talk at one of the meetings I was at.
Any other other? I have one small item to twist your arms if possible. In terms of board outreach, I was able to convince Mr. Anderson to do the polar bear plunge for Project Playground with me on February 25th. If anybody else, it's gonna be at Cook's Pond, February 25th. So if anybody would like to join, we have a team set up, and any other board members who'd like to come, that should be...
It's like a board team? You're a team of board members?
Well, it's two board members.
Do you get like a name?
It was a negotiation, I won't tell you what the other side of the negotiation.
I'm accepting all comers, but any board members who would like to join us, would be more than welcome. All right, if there's nothing else.
Just to save the date, in cooperation with the municipal alliance, we are going to have author and character ed developer Julia Cook on February 3rd. She's going to be coming to do work with the students, but also is added in a parent night. So we don't have the details, but it's definitely Friday, February 3rd. It's a Friday night, but we'll get more details. But that was exciting, that happened over break, working with Officer Underwood, they will help finance that, and she's really an incredible speaker. Parents will have such a good time, she's very, very funny, talking about ways to deal with their electronic addictive children, and it's funny, so I think we'll all enjoy it. More details to come.
So, we'll get us save the date out in the Friday folder?
Yeah.
We'll do it.
This just happened, so.
Good, great.
We're excited.
It's awesome, congratulations. Everybody good? Okay. At this point, we'll open up for public comment at 8:31 PM. And seeing no one here, we'll also close at 8:31 PM. And we'll open up for any last board comments, if anybody has anything. If not, I just want to say thank you again. I really welcome working with all of you, and welcome to Mrs. Wagner. Hopefully you'll find this experience rewarding, I think you will, and it's a great group of people, and I've really enjoyed working with you all, and looking forward to this year, so thank you all. If there's nothing else, we do have need for an executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Luer, would you care to do the honors?
Certainly. I would like to move to convene and get an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss legal issues?
Legal.
Legal issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Call in favor? Aye, yea? Any opposed? One nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none? We are in executive session at 8:33 PM.
We will not be taking...
And we will not be taking action when we come back out, thank you.
So Rick, you're gonna have to break this down tonight or tomorrow? You gotta do it tonight? All right, so give us, give us thirty, twenty, twenty minutes. You wanna go to the library?
Okay, it's up to you, if you want to break down.
You wanna break it down, we go to the library?
Yeah, why not?
Break it down, we'll go to the library.
We'll go to the library.
That's fine.